All right, well, thank you all for joining us for our third and final candidate forum this evening for the Fargo School Board. Just quick housekeeping reminders. Each candidate will get a one-minute introduction, followed by one minute for questions and one minute for closing statements, and we will alternate questions. Audience, please write any questions you may have on a card and give them to our volunteers here, and we'll ask the audience to hold their applause until the end of the forum. So with that, we will get started here with our first candidate, Thomas Hill.
All right. Well, thank you very much, appreciate the opportunity on League of Women Voters for hosting this debate. I am Thomas Hill, I'm a 12-year resident of the Fargo neighborhood. My fiance and I live in the Jefferson neighborhood and enjoy spending a lot of time exploring parks around the community with our dog Agnes. When I'm not doing that during the day, I have spent the past eight years working at United Way of Cass Clay as the Community Impact Director, and so my role is to really understand and leverage resources that are entrusted into the community and make sure that those investments are making individuals, children, and families self-sufficient. Largely, my work revolves around supporting nonprofit organizations that work in the area of education, and so I have a deep understanding and background in making data-driven decisions to ensure that as stewards of public investment and frankly, of public trust, we are making the best decisions possible. Prior to moving to the Fargo community 12 years ago, I served in the United States Army, in Army National Guard, where I was stationed in South Korea along the demilitarized zone, as well as being deployed to Bosnia-Herzegovina in 2003 and 2004 on a humanitarian, demanding peacekeeping mission. A little bit more, just have served on a few statewide committees around the area of education that have developed really the framework for what is the first-of-its-kind funding for some pre-K programming that will now, this year, have an impact on students in the Fargo School District. And I serve on the Leadership Committee for the North Dakota After-School Statewide Network, which helps to advocate and develop policy for how out-of-school-time programming activities can impact a child's educational career. So appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Ahmed Kamel.
Good evening. Thank you for the League of Women Voters for organizing this. My name is Ahmed Kamel. I'm a long-term resident now of the city of Fargo. I've lived in Fargo for 17 years now. I grew up in Egypt, moved to the United States 28 years ago. I'm a professor at Concordia. Like I said, I lived in Fargo for 17 years. I care about the city of Fargo. I'm running for the school board primarily because I believe that children are our future. We should be serving them, and I believe I have something to give. I have a long experience in education. I have advanced degrees in computing and in business, so I can make the tough business decisions as well as the educational decisions necessary for our children. I have served on several boards before in the area. I love serving on volunteer boards. I'm currently on the Board of Directors of the Rape and Abuse Crisis Center of the Red River Valley. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Center for Inner Faith Projects. And I will be happy to serve on the school board if given the opportunity to do so.
Thank you. Kristi Alrick.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for inviting us tonight. I am a product of the public school system. I grew up in northeast North Dakota in Cavalier in a small town, and I moved here after college in 1983. A lot of things that I've done, I've been very involved in the community as a leader and a volunteer, and I have two children that are in the school system. I've got a middle schooler and a high schooler, and I'm very active in their lives and parenting them. I'm currently the co-president of the Discovery PTA and just wrapped up with the Financial Planning Task Force for the school board. So that really brought a great insight, I feel, to bring to the school board. I am a past chairman of the Chamber of Commerce of Fargo Morehead, and that gave me an understanding of how a governance board works and the importance of knowing the role of that governance board. I also have attended several school board meetings, and I'm very familiar with the expectations of those school board members. I have a degree in business management. I've been in communication and management roles since the 80s, living here in Fargo, and I'm here to work hard and understand issues from all sides.
Thank you. John Rodenbiker.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for having us tonight. My name is John Rodenbiker, and I'm running for Fargo Public School Board because I love public schools. Public schools work. We are five to six weeks away from graduating almost 1,000 amazing kids. I love the opportunity and the promise of public schools. We take in all who live in our community and come in through our doors. All of those kids, all of our kids deserve equal opportunity to realize their fullest potential, regardless of their gender, their skin color, what nation they came from, their parents came from, what language they speak at home, what language they speak when they walk through those doors. All of them, regardless of the wealth of their families, regardless of which neighborhood they live in, they deserve the best that Fargo can give them. Further, these kids need to, and they deserve to, graduate having acquired the fundamental skills necessary to succeed in the 21st century. The teachers and all of the staff who serve those students deserve to be respected for their professionalism, their qualifications, and rewarded for their hard work with wages and benefits that allow them to support themselves and take care of their families. I live in Hawthorne neighborhood with my wife, two kids, and a 15-year-old cat, Trixie. Erica and I have been married for 14 years, the last 10 of which we've spent in our almost-century-old fixer-upper bungalow. Elizabeth is 10-years-old, and she is thriving in 4th grade at Clare Barton. And my son Jack has found his footing in kindergarten at Hawthorne. I've spent more than a decade making sure that the personal and private information of Ida Bailey, one of the largest and most respected accounting and business service firms in the country, stays personal and private, including that of our 60,000 clients and almost 1,800 staff and partners. In that more than a decade, I've spent that time drafting, debating, and enforcing policy, strategic plans, preparing and analyzing large budgets, governing technology, and working with and listening to people with diverse perspectives. Please, I look for your support. I look forward to hearing from you. Go to RodenbikerforFargo.com and vote Rodenbiker for Fargo on June 14th. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Rimp.
I guess that would be me. Yeah. I think I have this right. Yeah, okay, good. Hi, my name is Doug Rimp. I'm a retired NDSU faculty member. I'm here tonight because I'm a teacher. I love all things academic. I love especially students and teachers. And now that I'm retired, I wish to continue my academic career as a member of the Fargo School Board. Our children are our most precious assets, and I wish to do everything in my power to make sure that these kids, as they go through our public schools, have a fun, fulfilling, and exciting time. I want them to go home and have something good to share at their family dinner table with their parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Johnson.
Thank you. And I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this tonight, and I want to thank those of you that stayed for the After-City Commission show. It's been my honor and privilege to serve the citizens of Fargo on the school board for the last 15 years. And so I think for many voters, perhaps, I won't be a new face. I want to take this moment to thank everybody else up here for putting your name on the ballot and offering your skills, time, and talent. I'm hopeful that three of you and myself will serve on the next school board. So from that perspective, I want to at least tell the voters what to expect if they send me back for another term. We get lots of different decisions, from budgets to food to personnel. At the end of the day, I have three legs on a stool that really format all of my decisions. The first one is the students. How is it going to impact them negatively or positively? The second one is our staff. How is it going to impact them negatively or positively? And just as important, the third one is our taxpayers. How is it going to impact them? I'm certain tonight, somebody's going to ask me, or ask all of us, what we're going to do with the budget situation we currently face. I'm here to tell you that my goal is to make sure we have not a good system, not an adequate system, but an excellent system for each and every student. I think we have the ability to do it. It's going to take some tough decisions, but I think at the end of the day, we're going to get there. I was lucky enough to start kindergarten in Fargo Public Schools, graduate, send my two daughters through Fargo Public Schools. So I know the gift that Fargo Public Schools offers our community, and I hope to help make it even a better gift going forward.
Thank you. David Greger.
Hey, hello. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and everybody else that showed up and stayed. Like I said, it was a big crowd for the City Commission, but we've got a few selected individuals here that I'm really hoping on their vote. My name is David Greger. I grew up in Jameson, North Dakota, just a few miles from here. I attended my educational years through Jameson Public Schools, graduated in 1987. I attended NDSU. Then I married the love of my life and decided to join the workforce after my NDSU career. I worked locally at the Award Muscatel Automotive Group for about 16 years, mainly as the finance manager. We spent a short time in Hillsborough while my wife attended law school. The most painful part of that was the flood of 1997 and having to take a 45-minute drive, turn into an hour and a half through Castle Town, which was not fun. But we moved back to Fargo in 1999. We've been in the same house ever since. We lived and grew our kids up in the Lincoln Elementary neighborhood. My daughter Madeline is now a senior in college. My son Noah is a senior at Fargo South and moving on to NDSU. During my time, I had the opportunity to volunteer. I had a flexible schedule at work. I got to coach my son in soccer and his friends. I got to coach baseball. I was a Cub Scout leader at the Lincoln Elementary School for over 10 years, half of which my son wasn't even involved in scouts. But I just loved teaching children and helping them learn in the school on a weekly and monthly basis. I was also a dance dad, one of those guys that drove his daughter back and forth for four years to, or for four days a week to dance and enjoyed watching her learn a different type of education in the arts. I am currently serving as president of the Kiwanis Club of Fargo. I have been in that organization for 10 years. I am on the Finances Stewardship Committee at my local church. I am employed at New York Life as a financial services professional and the Maher Financial Group. I think my time and talents can be served pretty well with my history with some of the challenges that we're going to be facing financially, budget-wise, with the Fargo Public Schools in the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandy Anney.
My name is Brandy Anney, and I'd like to thank you guys for having us here today and everybody who did stick around to listen to the school board candidates. I'm from Fargo. I've lived here for 42 years. I grew up on the north side of Fargo, went to Washington Elementary, Fargo North, and Ben Franklin. I have a husband who is a veteran and works at job service, helping other veterans. And we have three children, which all have went to Washington, Fargo North, and Ben Franklin as well. I work at NDSU, and I basically just, I want to be really involved with the kids. The kids, it's more important for, I mean, it's basically the most important thing right now is the children in our community to make sure that they're educated. I did also do some activities with Fargo Youth Hockey and helped them with the financials. And I was also very active in football activities with FM Athletics. So I'm a very busy mom. I have a son that is in football, hockey, and in golf, so there's lots of toting around. He does a lot better now that he's old enough to drive, so that really makes it easier for the whole family. So that's why I chose to put my name on the ballot and run for school board, because I feel it's very important for Fargo to make sure that the kids are educated enough to where they can go on and be the future of Fargo. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll begin with our first question. Again, we'll have one minute for answers, and we'll begin with Ahmed Kamel. Will you work to amend the guiding principles within the district's long-range facility plan to incorporate building and landscape designs that optimize energy efficiency, reduce water usage, and employ low-carbon renewable energy?
I strongly believe in environmental causes for a variety of different reasons. We are stewards of this earth, and we have to preserve it for our children. After all, we're here, all of us, running for the school board for our children, and we have to teach those children themselves the value of taking care of the environment and of the earth that we all share and we all live in. And there is no better way in doing this than by example. And the example is the schools they go to. So yes, I would vote for that.
Thank you. Kristi Alrick.
Yes, I believe that it's important for us to take a look at the entire picture and see what's best for the environment as well as what is best for the school district and taking a look at what's been done in the past and how we can improve in the future.
Thank you. John Rodenbiker.
Yes, I support that, and not just because it's a good thing for the environment. One of the only reasons the 1516 budget is going to come in at a place where it's manageable is because we had a relatively warm winter. And so we're able to save some, we have a little bit of cost savings from that luckily. We're going to be able to work with that. Unfortunately, any kind of investments in sustainability, in making our buildings, our facilities, our grounds more eco-friendly, would cost money, money the district does not have right now. That has to be solved first. It can be solved. I'm sure there's going to be another question about how to solve that, but I will say yes, and not just to be earth-friendly, but because it makes long-term financial sense for the district.
Thank you. Doug Rimp.
Thank you. I had never thought that I would be asked as a potential school board member, something about being green, but I do confess to being a closet ecologist. In my house, all my lights are LED bulbs. I'm trying to get my house as quickly as possible to carbon-neutral. But on to the broader topic of the schools, I think that energy-saving is a good investment for our schools. In the long run, it'll get us there to to that financial nerve odd. It's not the whole story. It's just a piece of puzzle of the puzzle, but nonetheless, an important piece of the puzzle.
Thank you. Jim Johnson.
If I heard the question right, I think it was, would I support changing our long-range facility guiding principles to embed what I'll call LEED-certified thinking or energy efficiency? I wouldn't be opposed to it, nor would I support it necessarily, because the question implies that the district isn't already doing this. We have brand-new facilities in our district. They're built at the highest standards of energy efficiency and low impact to the environment possible. We have 100-year-old buildings in our district as well. They obviously are not as energy-efficient, but yet they are maintained at the utmost level that we can. And when it was time to put HVAC systems into our older structures just a couple of years ago, we elected to put high-energy-efficient systems in. So the question implies that it's not happening, and it is. Whether it needs to be in the long-range facility plan guiding principles or not is kind of a mute point. I think it's the world we live in today. I think the city does the same thing in all of their new structures. I'm sure the park board does too.
Thank you. David Greger.
Yeah, I think I have to go back to the question and what the question is, but I think that sustainable energy and environmental concerns goes back to the budget and the fact that I do believe the schools that we've built have been energy-efficient, to my knowledge. I've been inside of them, and I know that the buildings that are old, there has been some concerns in the past about shutting down the schools because it's too hot, or at my own local school of the air conditioning system not working correctly and having to be maintained and all that. But I think that, I think they've done a wonderful job of updating systems, and so I, once again, I think as long as you respect the economy and the budget that we're dealt with, I'm all for environmental responsibility and energy efficiency. But once again, I think they have done a pretty good job up till now.
Thank you. Brandy Anney.
I also would have to agree with that as far as the schools being up to par with the energy, and for one, Ben Franklin and North High are one of the oldest buildings in Washington at that, and I've been in all of them, and I feel that what they have in there right now is perfectly fine, but it does come back to the money issue. There's a lot of other areas, I think, right now that are a little bit more important to worry about and put the money towards than to have to worry about fixing the buildings. But I think the children are perfectly safe right now.
Thank you. Thomas Hill.
Sure, I think, you know, from the idea of, you know, do we want to be environmentally friendly? Sure, of course, everybody agrees with that. I think when you look at the long-range facilities plan and the work that's been done by a lot of district personnel and local volunteers, we need to respect and honor that work. And so I don't know that there's anything that we need to amend specifically, but do we want to have energy-efficient buildings? Yes, absolutely. It's been mentioned up here too that, yeah, we have some aging infrastructure. I think we have the opportunity to look at making improvements, but this is about prioritization. It's already been mentioned up here, and again, I know it's going to come up, but we're going to have to continually to make tough decisions regarding taxpayer investments. And so we need to take a holistic look at that. It can't just be yes or no. I think really, when you look at anything with budgeting or where you're doing school improvements, it has to come down to prioritization. And I would really hope that as a board, we can look at what the wishes of and the will of the taxpayers are to make sure we honor that, but absolutely support energy-efficient buildings where possible. Let's just be smart about how we go ahead and do that.
Thank you. The next question will begin with Kristi Alrick. To that point, how do you feel frozen local dollars as a result of a failed Mill Levy vote will affect the future of education in Fargo?
I think that that's a concern for all of us. And as part of the financial task force that I've been a part of the last several weeks, we've been studying that issue and determining what needs to be done. And right now, we're a school of excellence, and we have that excellence among our students, among our staff. And if we want to continue that and rise above that, one-third of our dollars right now is frozen. And if we continue that with our expenses rising, it's going to be a very difficult situation and very hard to remain a school of excellence. We will drop more to a mediocre school. So I think it's really important to take a look at it. We want to make sure that we're right sizing our schools and take a look at evaluating the different programs and things that we have and take a look at the entire picture and make sure we're making the right choices.
Thank you. John Rodenbiker.
Obviously negatively. People have made this seem like it's a really complicated issue when I don't think it is at all. The simple fact is that when somebody builds a new house in Fargo and they move their family into it, and they are paying their property taxes, the school district doesn't get any of that increased property tax dollars from our community. If a developer builds a new apartment building and 100 families move into that new apartment building, we don't get any of those property tax dollars to pay for our kids. And so what our community needs to do is come back together and say, yes, we do support Fargo Public Schools. We're operating, we didn't have any fat in the budget. The board went to the administration a few months ago and said, hey, you know what's coming. Start bringing us a balanced budget. And over the last couple of weeks, we've been seeing that. The percent change side is a sea of red. They've managed to nip and tuck about $3 million out of it, and we're still $600,000 to $750,000 short for next year. Our district's budget is 80% salaries and benefits. And so if we're going to have significant savings, if we need to find places to cut, that's where it's going to come from. We are going to be cutting people, hard-working people, qualified, professional people that live in this community, that have lived in this community for years, that have devoted their lives to our district, to our kids. All because of what? No good reason. It's ludicrous. It's ridiculous. Our Fargo Public Schools are good schools. We are not profligate. We build efficient buildings. We pay our people what they deserve. And it is a crying shame that we're in this position.
Thank you. Doug Rimp.
Okay, the mill cap certainly is an issue. Unfortunately, it's only part of the issue. Our property taxes represent about 30% of our revenue. 60% of our revenue comes from the state government. And my friends in the state government tell me, don't look for any more money from us. In fact, look for less. And so we got a problem at the state level. We've got a problem at the property tax level. And I was at a meeting a while ago, a Dr. Schatz was presiding, and he said, oh, by the way, don't look for any money from the feds. And so it's a big problem all around. The next few years in the school district are going to be tough. There's going to have to be some tough choices that are made. It's ugly. I was at the school board meeting last night, and I was really sort of devastated because, well, how will we solve this budget? Let's raise, you know, the lunch money fees. And I know nobody wanted to raise the lunch money fees, but the thing is that we are in, we're in serious trouble. And I wish I knew the answer to this. It's just really complex, and it's, we're going to have to take years to figure this out.
Thank you. Jim Johnson.
Probably the question really leads to the reason I'm sitting up here right now. If in fact I thought everything was rose-colored going forward financially for the school district, I think I would have probably preferred to go back to just being a private citizen and probably be in a bet, almost getting ready for bet at this time of night. But I do want to say, the sky is not falling. We've got some incredibly capable people running this school district, and I'm not talking the school board. I think we do a pretty good job. We're going to find efficiencies over the next couple of years without impacting students, without impacting staff. Long-term, there will be impacts if something doesn't change. And you're spot-on. Our budget's really made up of, well, actually, four components. Some federal dollars, we got sequestered on those a few years ago, so we learned not to rely upon that. State dollars, and the state over the last probably, oh, I don't know, six to eight years has really stepped to the plate and got to the level we're at right now. When I originally got on the school board, local taxpayers were paying about 65% of the freight of Fargo Public Schools. I have a lot of faith in the citizens of Fargo. I think when we have the ability to show the transparency that the district is putting forward on our budget, show the efforts we're making to provide excellent education opportunities to the students and what that comes out to for a price tag, I have full faith the city of Fargo is going to support public schools in Fargo for the foreseeable future and decades to come. So the sky is not falling. We do have some tough work in front of us, and it starts in Bismarck in January, advocating at the state level, and then making sure the city understands where we, as a school district, are financially going forward.
Thank you. David Greger.
Yes, I, yeah. In regards to the frozen local dollars and affecting the local education in Fargo and the Mill Levy, I believe in my meetings with public officials on different levels of education and government that we do have a fixed budget for the next year. And we are not going to have to cut teacher salaries, per se, and cut funding for programs. What we need to do is, we need to go back to the public and educate them on what they need to do to help continue the excellence in education that has been put forward with the Fargo Public School District for the last, how many years, and go back to a vote on a new Mill Levy. And that's just the plain and simple fact. And I am wanting to speak with Dr. Flowers in West Fargo and the success that they've had in asking the public and had in asking the public and bringing knowledge to the public of how it all works. And we might be able to lower the mill levy to 135 from 139. And that might be able, with our property values increasing, increase our budget in itself. And so educating the public on things such as that, I think, with communication with communities that have done it at extraordinarily high levels of voter turnout compared to what we dealt with a couple of years ago, I think it's just, it's a matter of public education and a matter of a board presence and maybe getting some help with people that have done this the right way and have been successful in it, and communicating with them so that we can be successful with the education of our children going forward with the standard of excellence in education that we've come to expect, not cutting programs or cutting teacher salaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy Anni.
I think the same thing as all of us do, and I think we just really need to look at everything in a full picture of financials and just look and see where we're spending. I don't think we really have an answer at this point. It has been something that, the mill tax has been frozen for a while, so I don't think that there's really any answer on that. But I do think that we really have huge support from the Fargo residents. I think everybody really, you know, is on board with making sure that our kids are, you know, I mean, that they're basically receiving all the education that they need to have from Fargo. So I don't think there really is an answer right now to what we're going to do, but we'll find out.
Thank you, Thomas Hill.
Sure. I think this has, you know, been talked about a little bit, too, but again, when you look at the budget of the district and that, again, it's been mentioned, but that 80% are, of the whole budget is made up in staff and salaries, and you do have, right now, again, a frozen mill levy, we need to be incredibly transparent with the citizens of Fargo, what the potential impact will be. And as a board, we need to deal with the situation that is at hand. And so you're always going to have to make tough choices and be transparent, but I think there can be some real transparency with the public about that the mill levy vote is not necessarily, you know, asking for increased taxes on citizens, but talking about, let's maintain the status quo that we've had. Let's continue to have the ability to have local control. I'm a huge proponent for small class sizes and neighborhood-based schools. And when you start looking at a lot of the demographics that have been coming out, not only from the district, but other community members, Fargo is projected to grow by about 100 kindergarteners, brand-new kids each and every year for the next five to 10 years. We're going to, these kids are going to need to go somewhere. And again, when you look at the lion's share of this budget being in staff, salaries, benefits, compensation, absolutely, we need to maintain an excellent education system that we have right now, but it will be impacted if we don't have the ability to meet the growing demand of our community. And so, again, I don't think there's any easy answer, but I think as a board, we have to look at what are all of our options. But one thing I want to be very steadfast is that we need to support the teachers that are really the first line of educators to these students.
Thank you, Ahmed Camel.
Right. This question, the answer, really relies on two foundational issues. One of them, what should we do when we don't have the budget and how, what can we do to raise additional money for the budget? So number one, in the current situation with the frozen budget, we need essentially to do more, sufficient research to find out where are the points in the system, where we can improve efficiency, to improve that. I'm a researcher by training. That's what I do for a living. I'm a college professor, and that's what we do. So we will, I will spend with other members of the board and the school staff the time necessary to research the system and find the points where we can improve efficiency. The second part is to try, again, the voters, I'm sure, will just, will come forward and support the system. Once it's properly explained to them, here is the situation, here is what we need in order to continue to have the schools of excellence that we have, because most people want this for their children, and that's where the future lies. This morning, I was sitting in my office grading student papers, and I'll tell you, the two most common comments I put on the paper are either, yes, you justified your argument very well, or no, you did not justify your argument very well, and here's why you're losing points. So I know how to build an argument and justify the reasoning behind it, because it's not sufficient to say, we need more money. No, we need more money because here are the items that we need the money for, and it's for the children. There are lots of people who move here specifically for the quality of the schools. I'm one of them. When I was looking for places to get, to accept a job 17 years ago, part of what attracted me to Fargo is the quality of the schools. And we have excellent schools, and I would like to see that continue. And I think I can build the argument to convince the voters that we should do that.
Thank you. Our next question will start with John Rodenbiker. There was a request from South High student leaders to have a student representative from each of the three high schools on the board for a one-year term. This idea was rejected by the school board. What is your position, and would you revisit it if you were elected to school board?
I think the board and the administration handled that very well. The students don't necessarily have the depth and breadth of experience. They're not necessarily even able to vote. But their voices do need to be heard. And the administration heard those voices, and they have invited those students into many other activities, including the Financial Planning Task Force, other opportunities around the district. I think that's really important, and it's a really key indicator of how great our superintendent is and how great his cabinet and his staff are, that they hear those students. This is all about the students. Just this past Tuesday night, one of my favorite reasons to go to these school board meetings is they have students that come from around the district, and they show what they've been learning, what they've been doing in the district. And we had a ton of them, I'm sorry, this is two weeks ago, the last, or two school board meetings ago, talking about all the projects that they've done in our schools, in our community, going out there, finding jobs, taking opportunities to find opportunities for leadership in our community. Just another great example of how excellent, excellent Fargo Public Schools are. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug Rimpf.
Once again, the question is on student representation on the school board.
Correct.
Okay, good. I've had the privilege of working with students on governing committees at NDSU, on the University Athletic Committee, on the University General Education Committee. And I felt that they've really added a positive impact to the meetings. They have this perspective that wouldn't otherwise be shared. It's not the only perspective, but they're one, a very important stakeholder in our school system. And I have, actually, I would look forward to serving with students on the school board.
Thank you, Jim Johnson.
Interesting question. I think there are two sides to this that maybe the students aren't quite aware of, and maybe we adults aren't quite aware of as well. First of all, serving on the school board isn't Tuesday night twice a week or twice a month. I don't know, my committee meetings, and I belong to a couple of them, start at 7:30 in the morning. So the first question I would ask is, how much class time are we saying a student can miss because we're going to have them come play in the school board playground? And I think that's one of the points the students perhaps do not quite understand. The second side of it is, you know, at the end of the day, if you're going to have three students selected to somehow represent the voice of 12,000 students, I'd say, well, first of all, it better be four, because we have four high schools. And then I would say, is that really a fair responsibility? Having raised a couple of teenage daughters that I think were overachievers, they'd probably be the people that would want to come and hang out at the school board as much as anybody. But exactly how much time do we want to take from these people at that precious stage of their life? We give lots of opportunities for engagement with students. I think what we need to do isn't bring the students to the school board room. We, as school board members, need to get to the schools and hang out with the students, spend time with them, visit the student councils, visit the different clubs, and hear their voices. Because quite frankly, I don't think the boardroom is where those voices will really come shining through.
Thank you, David Gregor.
Yes, thank you. Yes, the, you know, when I made the decision that I was going to run for this, I was at a fortunate time in my life when I was ending a lot of other things that I had volunteered my time and talents for. And as a student, I don't believe that they are prepared or can do the duties of a school board member and, or expect them to, or should. As far as hearing their views and opinions and having them be part of it, of course, they are welcome to attend, but I think the only way to do that would be to go to them, not have them go to us. Like Jim said, I think as a longtime member of the school board, I think he, better than any of us on this panel, know how much time is involved to do that and to take some more time out of your school board duties to be expected to go to, whether it be key club meetings, or whether it be a student, a government meeting, or whatever it is, you know, that's something that we might have to look at down the road if we want more student input on the school board. But I definitely do not have any intention of approving or agreeing with appointing four high school students to be on the school board.
Thank you, Brandy Anni.
Well, we elect our board, and I think that their decisions that they make is basically what we have to support. I mean, that's, we put, you know, the trust in them to be able to make those decisions, and if that's a decision that they chose to make and the reason why they didn't allow that to happen, I think that that's what we need to support. So I support the decision of them, for sure.
Thank you, Thomas Hill.
Sure. I think there's really already some really great involvement that students have been able to provide to the strategic planning process and to the district overall. Give a lot of credit to Dr. Schatz involving students with the boundary changes and ensuring that kids understood how this does impact their education. And again, I served on the Strategic Planning Committee in, it was early 2015, and that was a really, really great opportunity for students to be involved in their local district and their education. I, you know, knowing that there are four open seats for the school board, you know, I'm willing to have that conversation with new board members to say, do we want to revisit, you know, having student representation on there? But I really have to tend to agree with Jim. I think the onus is on us as potential board members or current board members to go out and educate not only students, but parents on what are the decisions that are being made at the school board level and how can you provide input? Because we need to be advocates for kids, but we also need to understand what are people telling us? And so I really think it, the impetus has to be on us to go out and be advocates in the community for the board.
Thank you, Ahmed Camel.
Right. Well, first, I agree with the idea that several of my fellow candidates put forward of us as members of the school board would go to the schools and visit and so on, but this doesn't preclude having students visit with the school board and perhaps be members of the school board. In my experience in higher education, at colleges and universities, there are almost always student members of any governance committees, and their input is always valuable because they provide a point of view that's different from the rest of the people on the committees. Oftentimes in higher ed, what we do is we shelter the students from the full responsibilities. We say the student member of the committee will have these responsibilities that are a subset of the responsibilities of everybody else. They don't have to be a full-fledged member doing all the things that occupy a lot of their time, but we can shelter them and have them be part of the meetings, have them be part of certain areas of responsibility where they can provide opinions, they can provide input, and it makes a big difference. In my classrooms in college, I actually tell students on the very first day of class, one of your opportunities to earn extra credit is to find something that I tell you in class that's wrong and tell me about it. It doesn't happen very often, but it happens, and they earn extra credit for it, because students have a different eye on it, and they are really the biggest stakeholders in this. Whether we talk about three students, four students, or even maybe one student, that's something to be discussed.
Thank you, Kristi Ulrich.
I would agree with the board's decision to reject that notion to bring students to the school board. A couple of my reasons, I think right now there are many opportunities for the students to participate. Thomas made note of it on the task force he served on. There were some on the Financial Planning Task Force that I serve on. There's other committees that they can participate in. And I think as a school board, it's really important for us to be active listeners and to engage the students in getting feedback from them, but it doesn't mean that they need to be a servant of the school board.
Thank you. We have time for one more question before our closing remarks. We'll begin with Doug Rimpf. Recent statements from statewide candidates have expressed reservations on moving forward with implementation of the Common Core in the state. What's your position on implementation of Common Core in North Dakota?
Common Core is a, that's a really hard thing to explain. It only a minute, so maybe I should talk fast. Dr. Schatz let me take the assessment test for the fourth graders that they take. And I can tell you, the test, the exam itself is good, and it measures what it should. The math test really is math skills that they should have, and the reading stuff is really reading skills that they should have. My problem with Common Core, after talking with school teachers, is that their classrooms are being micromanaged, that they're getting this directive that this is what you do from 9:37 a.m. to 9:42 a.m., and it's done by somebody in some distant office. And I don't have anything against anybody in the distant office, but the person in the distant office can't see the faces of the kids in the schoolroom. When something's not working, a talented teacher changes gears. And the people in Bismarck or Washington, they can't see those faces. We're paying for a lot of talent with our schoolteachers, and now we're not letting them use it. Why, you know, it's incredibly valuable talent to be able to look at the faces of the students in the classroom and say, hey, this isn't working, and, hey, Common Core, forget it. I'm going to switch it, and I'm going to do that, which I know excites the student to keep them entertained. It's, when Common Core forces a bunch of boring stuff down students, that's when you get the troublemakers in the classroom. As long as you can keep the students engaged, the problems don't happen, and I, sorry, I think I just said something very controversial.
Thank you, Jim Johnson.
Well, first of all, I'm here to tell you that Fargo Public Schools does not have something called a Common Core. In fact, there is no school in North Dakota that has something called a Common Core. What we have in North Dakota are the North Dakota State Standards. And people from our district, some of our best educational leaders, along with educational leaders throughout the state, actually wrote those standards. And yes, they parallel off the outline that came out, quote-unquote, as a Common Core. Nobody in the federal government, nobody in the state government has picked out a textbook for Fargo, much less paid for the textbooks in Fargo. That's a function handled locally. So no teacher in any classroom in Fargo is being told at 9:37, you teach this subject this way at this time. Instead, what we have are expectations that our students will achieve. They're all going to get worked over again politically, so whoever didn't like this, whoever submitted this question, trust me, with ESSA, we are now going to have to rewrite the state standards again. So there'll be a whole nother batch of people not in this room and not in Fargo Public Schools that have pretty good ideas of what teachers should be doing in the classroom. I'm hopeful that sooner or later, we'll grow up politically and take politics out of K-12 education and recognize that we have professionals, not the school board, not the state legislature, and God forbid, not Washington, D.C., that should be making the educational decisions that impact our kids. And I'm here to tell you, in large part, that's exactly what currently happens.
Thank you, David Gregor.
Yeah, this is the second time I've been asked about Common Core education, and when you Google it, look at the map. you Google it, look at the map, and you see North Dakota as a state that has Common Core, that they've enacted Common Core. And what we have, what I've read is something called the Glass Paper Project. It was started in 2014. It was the deployment of personal learning devices in grades nine through 12. And it involves 21st century skills. And eventually, they want to get them, in fact, I think it was last year, they started with the middle school kids, getting them in the middle schools, right? But 21st century skills are the four Cs. So if you want to say Common Core, I don't know, but the Fargo Public Schools enacted something called 21st century skills, communication, collaboration, critical and creative thinking. And these are the things that Fargo Public Schools are using to provide an above adequate education to our students, not Common Core.
Thank you, Brandy Ani.
I feel that we have teachers that are very well educated, and I just really wish that sometimes they would be able to do their job. I do hear comments, because I am close to quite a few of them, that there's just sometimes that there's stuff that's overtaking, and they don't get a chance to be able to teach what they've learned. So I do believe that we need to start letting them teach the kids, keeping them active, keeping them focused on what the teacher's teaching, and let them do their job. Because that's what they're hired to do.
Thank you, Thomas Hill.
Sure. I actually have to fully agree with Jim that the notion of Common Core has been a very politicized topic, but the reality is, is that North Dakota has a set of state standards that were developed by educators both locally and across this wonderful state to help implement to what David was talking about, too, is 21st century skills. We are in a global economy, and so we need to make sure that whether a kid lives in Bismarck, or Bowbells, or Fargo, or Phoenix, Arizona, that the skills that they're learning are transferable because we're in a global economy, and they really relate to, again, the four Cs. United Way has been a very active partner with the three metro school districts, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, and Convention and Visitors Bureau, and the FMEDC, in really trying to bolster a partnership that gives kids real-world opportunities to demonstrate and learn the four Cs. I think what's frankly really unfortunate, well, first of all, I'd say is, I'm not an educator by trade, and so I'm not sure that I've got the experience to stand up here and talk about what 40-plus educators across the state have spent years developing and implementing and adopting, and sure that it's effective. And so I'm not sure that I'm the voice that gets to say, no, this is bad, this is good. I want to learn more. But I think what's really unfortunate is that this idea of Common Core and state standards, whatever you want to call them, it's been politicized, and it's being politicized on the backs of our kids. And that you're trying to say it's bad or it's good, when what we need to do as a board is try and understand holistically what are the state standards that we need to teach to, and how can we provide continual opportunities for kids to have these experiences that are going to allow them to thrive in a 21st century economy? And so I believe a thriving school district is key to a thriving economy. And I think there's demonstration, John, I know you and I were both at the same board meeting, and Kristy was too, two weeks ago, where we had the opportunity to learn and see kids from Carl Benialson Middle School demonstrate the four Cs in action in relation to social studies and history. That's impressive. And so, again, we need to de-politicize the argument or the notion about Common Core, especially when it's at the expense of our kids.
Thank you, Ahmed Camel.
Well, first, I heard lots of shout-outs for the school teachers in Fargo. I certainly have to second that. We have great teachers in the city. I have three kids who went to schools. I've met, over the years, wonderful teachers. I have, my daughter is a teacher, actually, at Fargo South right now, and they're doing a fantastic job. But to address the specifics, Common Core has two goals, two primary goals. There are others. One of them is to standardize the base of knowledge that all children across everywhere acquire. B, standardize the order where they acquire it. These are very important goals because, the first one, standardizing what children should know, like it was mentioned, we live in a global economy, a global world, where they have to compete with everybody else. So we need them to have the skills necessary to do that, what we call the 21st century skills. And because there hasn't been standards before, talk to any college professor nationwide, and they will tell you. One of the hardest things that colleges and universities have to do remedial classes to pick up the slack for kids coming from different areas where they don't have the necessary skills. B, the scheduling of the ordering of the information. We live in a mobile economy. People who are here today are going to be in Florida tomorrow. People who are in California today will be here tomorrow, and so on. And it's very hard for kids when they are learning different things. I've personally moved to Fargo, and my two oldest kids, one moved into third grade, the other moved into fifth grade at the time. And it was very hard. Some of them actually missed learning certain skills because it was taught in different orders between where we were in Connecticut and here, for example. And that's important if we want to compete at the long term. That's a very important aspect. The other aspect of Common Core that people sometimes confuse is they confuse the fact that the contents, what's the subject matter, with the minutia of the micromanagement and the testing. That part, teachers should be given a significant leeway. But the educational content and the subject matter itself, it's very important to implement those standards.
Thank you, Kristy Ulrich.
Thank you. When I've looked at this, and I believe that we've got the North Dakota state standards, I have to put my faith, I'm not an educator by trade, I'm in management and communications. So it's really important for me to trust the professionals in that as an educator, trust their expertise and their experience. I've talked to several teachers. I've got friends that are teachers. I had a sister who was a teacher. And talking to them about the standards, they say it's a great place to start, but it does not limit them to stop at a certain level. And they go above and beyond what those standards are. So it does address it to going to global areas. And I have a son who's in sixth grade, and he comes home, he doesn't ever talk about core standards or any Common Core items. He comes home and talks about his 21st century skills. And he comes home and he says, Mom, today we worked on our 21st century skills, and I was using my critical thinking. So I feel that the teachers are doing a good job teaching those 21st century skills to the students and elevating them in that direction.
Thank you, John Rodenbiker.
I have a little different take on this, I guess. I don't think, taking a step back, standards, yes or no? Why do we have standards? Standards don't hold us back. Standards let us excel. They allow for benchmarking. The standards are goals. Has our student learned this? And by having that benchmark, by having that goal, we can individualize the learning for all of our kids in our district. And so our teachers know, hey, is this kid getting this? Yeah, great. Has this kid mastered this? Fantastic. Maybe they need to be treated a little bit differently and taken to a next level. Maybe this kid's falling behind. They are not quite where the rest of the classroom is. Hey, now we know that. We can provide individualized attention because of standards. This is an area of excellence in Fargo Public Schools. It's because of these standards that we were just recognized by Advanced Ed accreditation that we are providing this individualized education for these kids. We're finding these kids are not slipping through the cracks. The talented and gifted kids are able to find that next level and excel. And number two, they let us scale our excellence. I've been asked several times, which school board are you running for in Fargo? We have one school board for 29 schools, 12,000 kids. How do we dare let a new teacher enter a classroom without having some kind of standards and procedures? Giving them a blank slate? That's a recipe for failure, not just for that teacher, but for that classroom. And for every class that goes through that classroom, till that teacher either figures it out, or odds are within five years, in most districts in the country, they're going to quit and they're going to find something else to do. Standards let us scale. They let us excel, not in North, or South, or Davies, or Longfellow, or Kennedy. They let all of our students across the district excel. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move to our one-minute closing statements. And if you want to add in kind of the number one reason you're running for a school board, if you wish, we'll start with Jim Johnson.
First of all, Jolene, thank you. And again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight. I'm here because of Mrs. Rindall. She was my second-grade teacher, and I had a lot of detention, spent a lot of time in school, and figured it's time to give something back. You know, again, I got to say, I'm pretty proud to be a product of Fargo Public Schools. I hope in serving on the school board, I've done a service back to the community that educated me. And while there are going to be many, many difficult decisions, several we didn't even talk about tonight, which is just fine, I have a lot of faith that we, as a community, believe in education. We have some incredible people leading our district currently, as we have in the past. So the ship is going to sail just fine. We're going to do the work that needs to be done, and we're going to have some kids that do incredible things going forward. Last but not least, regardless of who you might vote for, please, go vote on June 14.
Thank you, David Gregor.
Yes, thanks, Jolene, League of Women Voters, and all attendees. I want to start out with something I might have been misstated. Dr. Schatz, Jeffrey, I think, has done an outstanding job with the school board in his role. And we had a discussion that, you know, he froze his own salary because he felt that that wasn't right for him to take in an advance increase. And when I refer to Dr. Flowers and the City of West Fargo and the school board, and what they've done is because of local proximity, they had to have to go to the voters and ask for money. We're in a unique position with the City of Fargo because we were in existence before the state of North Dakota. And so we are the City of Fargo School Board of Education, not the West Fargo Public School District. And there are some rules in the books that we were able to take advantage of in a couple of general fund bill levies to fund projects like Davies that did not need to go to the public for acceptance of those buildings. And in the meetings that I've had with people, number one overall is the frustration people have, and why that is such an issue going forward is because I believe in the lack of communication, the lack of knowledge of why that took place. And I think that going forward, if we want to move forward and involve this community in the education of our children, communication has to be upfront utmost, most important. And if we don't have people in the board, on the board, that can communicate with the public how we do things and why we do things going forward, because that can't happen anymore, we have to go to the public if we want to build a new school. We can't use old-school mathematical techniques and funding that we took advantage of. And it was well-needed, it was well-used, but the fact of the matter is, the legislature doesn't let us do that anymore. And we can't do that. We need people on the board that communicate, that know how to communicate. Because if we can't communicate with the public on future needs, we can't strive for the excellence in education that we've been able to have over the past several years.
Thank you, Brandy Ani.
Thank you so much for having me as well, and everybody else who is here. The basic reason why I want to run is because I'm very passionate about the education that we already have. I think we have a very, very excellent education. And I think that Fargo Public Schools practices that every day. And I'm excited to explore and get new ideas in the mix. And basically, too, the growth, we just, we need to have the kids grow into well-rounded individuals, and just make sure that they grow up with the best education that they can have. And that's the reason why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas Hill.
Well, I would like to, again, thank all of you for sticking around. And a huge thank you to all of you as candidates for running. I think it's not an easy thing, and it's definitely been a learning process for me, too, so I just congratulate you all on running as well. And Jim, thank you for your private service on the board. I'm running for a school board because I want to serve this community. For the past eight years, like I mentioned, I've worked at United Way of Cast Clay as the Community Impact Director. And what I do is I lead the annual external investment strategy, where we invest upwards of $5 million back into the community. And we do that by understanding research, data, and making tough decisions on what programs are going to have the best and most positive impact on kids and families in this community. Interestingly, the National Governors Association has noted that only 15% of a child's waking hours are actually spent in the class. Kids grow up in neighborhoods. They grow up in places of worship. They grow up at nonprofit programs like Boys and Girls Club, like the YMCA, like Charism. They've got Big Brothers and Big Sisters. And all of those programs play a vital impact on how well a kid is going to do in their educational tract. Another just piece of information is that we have currently 7,000 open jobs in our Cast Clay community. And as the fourth-largest employer in the community, or third or fourth-largest, Fargo School Districts has a huge responsibility, and they do an excellent job every day of educating over 12,000 individuals, many of whom will stay in this community and get and fill those open jobs. We need to make sure that nonprofit community partners, community organizations, both secular and faith-based, have the opportunity to interact with the school. And as board members, we need to make sure that we're being good stewards and fiscally responsible of the investments that are entrusted to us. And so that's why I'm running for school board. I think I'll bring a unique perspective to this. And again, would just encourage you to go vote on June 14.
Thank you, Ahmed Camel.
Okay. Again, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for arranging this. I'd like to thank the audience for being here. I'm running for the school board not because we have a problem right now. I'm running for the school board because we have an excellent system right now. I'd like it to continue. I'm very grateful to this community. I've been living here for a long time. I feel that the future is the education of our children, and we all have a common responsibility to work towards that. So because of that, I'm running for the school board. I have, my two older children are the product of the Fargo School System, and I'm very proud of them. My youngest child is currently in middle school in Discovery, and I hope he has the same opportunities as he goes through the rest of his years in the school system, like his older siblings. So I feel like I have the skills to contribute. That's why I'm running there. The school board, of course, by its very nature, will need lots of skilled people who come from different backgrounds, who can all contribute, who can negotiate with each other. And I feel I have many of these skills. I've been known at Concordia College, when people have problems on committees, they ask me, can you come in and sit on that committee? You have a way of getting people to see each other's point of view and make it work. And I would love to do that on the school board. So thank you again, and I will look forward to your vote. If you want to know more about me, go to ahmedcamel.info, and you will find some more information.
Thank you, Kristy Ulrich.
Thank you. Thank you to all of you that have stuck around tonight and have asked the questions. I believe education is the foundation of a strong community. And with that, I believe that we've got to invest in all children, and we need to educate the whole child. Right now, we've got opportunities not only to educate our future doctors and lawyers, but our future CNAs, our future customer service reps, the sanitation worker. We need to educate all children, and that's very important. I would work very hard to understand the issues from all sides, and I've been known not to be afraid to ask the tough question. I'm not going to sit back and just listen. I will ask the questions, and we will work together to a common goal and to achieve that. I'm a compassionate leader, and I've worked very hard serving the community in the past, and I look forward to serving again. So thank you very much.
Thank you, John Rodenbiker.
Thank you again, League of Women Voters, for this opportunity. It's been an honor. Again, my name is John Rodenbiker, and I'm running for Fargo Public Schools because I love public schools. All residents of Fargo, our students, our teachers, all of the staff in our school buildings, and our taxpayers deserve a school board that's accessible, that's transparent, and that's committed. When you vote for Rodenbiker for school board, you're voting for a unique perspective and the right qualifications to make smart decisions for a public school's future. Please visit Rodenbiker for Please visit rodenbikerforfargo.com. Let me know what you are thinking. I want to hear your voice. And vote for Rodenbiker for Fargo on June 14. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And finally, Doug Rymf.
You're going to let a school teacher end this? That's a dangerous thing to do. I'd like to share with everyone why I'm really excited to be in Fargo, why I was excited to be at NDSU. I've had the privilege of teaching at three universities: Emporia State University, the University of South Carolina, and now North Dakota State University. And the kids that come out of the Fargo Public School System into our university are just great. I mean, they're like years ahead of what's going on in, around the country. It's, yeah, I mean, these kids are a delight to work with. That's why I chose to stay with NDSU so long, was the quality of the kids that are coming into our college classrooms, and they've just been a joy, and I wish to continue working with those kids because of the quality of the kids that are here in Fargo. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, I would thank the audience for attending, for watching, and for submitting your questions. Visit the League's website for any information on voting. And finally, please join me in thanking the candidates for sticking it out with us, and we apologize for going over time. So thank you very much for your time tonight.
I think I can take that. Go bed now.
Yes, exactly.